All right, guys, we're gonna go ahead and get started. We're gonna do our run through voting system now.
Where's the run through?
Go back. Get back on there.
So we're going in the run through.
Right?
Yes, yeah.
And then.
Yes. So. Are we doing the voting system run through?
We're gonna try to do it.
Okay, I think so you're in the.
Just click on the run through, Aaron.
Perfect, run through, okay.
Click on it.
Run through, not the agenda.
Got it.
It's on the blue run through.
Yep, I did.
No, you clicked on the agenda.
Good, sorry.
There you go. Like I'm watching you click on that, it's similar, yeah.
I'm calling the meeting to order. Moving to approval of the agenda.
We still on the run through?
Yeah.
Pretend I just.
They got a roll call first, right?
Okay.
So a motion and a second?
Yep, motion for approval of the agenda.
Take motion.
Second.
All right.
That's open.
Does everybody see the poll?
Hey.
Will the mayor still say please vote?
Please pretend to vote. Hey.
Right. Moving on to the approval of the consent agenda.
The consent agenda. I will take move.
All right.
What was that? What am I doing?
This is on me, hang on.
Stay the golden.
They stay the fun camp nice things.
Now we're intent, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Motion and second.
Yeah, we got that.
Okay.
Dave and myself.
Thank you.
Oh, man.
Oh.
And somebody didn't vote.
Keep everybody up toes.
You got them all.
We got six.
Country in over there.
Well, you know, they say we all just are lemons.
Yeah, that's pretty slick.
Can everybody see that?
Yep, and the gas.
Much better.
Yeah, absolute, yeah.
Uh, I can see it, but now it just says the rest.
She's talking about up there too.
Scroll down.
He still didn't get okay, where do I get?
Oh, scroll down.
Do we keep public forum?
Okay.
Mine doesn't wanna go away.
She can't get shit, okay.
Mine locked up.
Just a minute. Uh, more. What is she needing to do here to get that? There was a lot of.
And I scrolled, and I scrolled.
I was saying, same thing.
Right, cuz that was. The target was. Wasn't the much as a gym. The gym should be open to vote?
Okay. Okay.
Just remember, if you wanna follow the agenda, you can open it in another tab on the side. So you can pull it back to it.
She's got one else ready.
Did you have any attachments in the, did she run any attachment?
No.
No.
Whatever. Yeah, and there's.
We have, we have theirs.
Is it because we have three different types of votes?
No.
Message max length?
Right?
It's like, it's like nobody goes to.
We have. Been awhile. It's like. Obviously not.
But it's up there though.
No, that's, that's one.
Yeah. It's like the PSA. This would be the same. Nobody else.
Okay, people gonna start from somewhere.
Someone had it different.
Twice. We ended though, we wouldn't have found this.
Let's try another vote on item seven.
Okay.
Okay.
We got to that.
And you tell when they're not voting, Aaron.
Oh, yes.
Oh, wait, no.
Wait, no, it, I'm still good. No vote.
He can't vote anyways, financial. He can't vote anyways.
Still having that weird thing.
Get it on video?
I know, okay.
All right, that would be the thing.
I think it's been. We've been pretty sure.
Yeah.
What's going on here, but?
Well, the weather.
But it's like. Should we go to the actual meeting?
Guys, let's do it. You wanna run with this?
You can always switch.
It's a board agenda. Numbers wise, so.
Yep, okay, okay.
Let's do it.
Yes, and now.
Go back to the top, so back to meetings list. All the way up.
I think we go. Must try that. It's top one.
Go to the list, please.
We'll get the bugs worked out.
Now, we're in the room.
There's go. Yeah, looks like.
Well, you can have everyone in there because I'm.
Okay, I'm gonna call this regular meeting of the Nevada City Council to order. A couple of items before we get going. Uh, to keep the meeting moving, uh, we have a lot of speakers. Uh, we are gonna use a timer this week. I will be on the screen for people speaking. Make sure you go up to the podium when it's time for you to speak. Uh, and let's refrain from clapping, cheering, jeering. Uh, for, for this meeting. Just show the proper decorum for a city council meeting.
Actually, that's for all meetings. That's part of your council, that's what he is, so let's hold to it.
So if I could get roll call?
Luke Spence.
Here.
Henry Foreman.
Here.
Dan Nielsen.
Here.
Jason Sampson.
Here.
Steve Skyes.
Here.
Sandy Eric.
Here.
Can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second. Council, please vote.
I'm still closed.
The agenda is approved. Moving on, we have public hearing, capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. Don't believe I have any questions submitted. Any comments for the capital improvement plan? Public forum is closed. So. Uh, resolution. For the capital improvement plan. Yeah, second.
To clarify, resolution eighty four.
You also please vote.
Sorry. Open now.
What's that? But it's not showing.
Yeah.
Just a while, on mayors, it's not showing what's voted, like it is on the other screens.
He can't vote, it's not on.
Like I can see the live voting on our screens, but he doesn't see any of that.
Okay, I can change his provisions.
All right.
Oh, yeah, let's see, we're moving on, yours doesn't close out.
Right. Okay, motion's passed. So we're moving on to public hearing. It's open for the Nevada urban revitalization area. I don't have any semitic questions for that. Any questions regarding revitalization area? Seeing nine, I'll close that public hearing. Can I get a motion for resolution number eighty five?
Move to, uh, great. Approve resolution eighty five.
Second.
Council, please vote.
Oh.
You get that too?
Often, yes.
All pass, it's pass.
Okay. Right. So, moving on for the approval of the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
It's the second.
Council, please vote. Okay. That has passed. All right, uh, we are moving on to the public forum for inquiries. I've got quite a few.
I'm gonna do the AC first, make sure we don't miss those.
Okay. All right, so we will start with item A, proclamation for national volunteering.
Yeah, there's a proclamation in the packet, you can read it or not, up to you.
Click on the link, it'll come right up.
All right. All right. So this proclamation, whereas the entire community can inspire, equip, and mobilize people to take action that changes the world and whereas volunteers can connect with local community service opportunities through hundreds of community service organizations laying the foundation for tomorrow's growth and prosperity. And whereas individuals and communities are at the center of social change, discovering their power to make a difference and during this month, all over the nation, service projects will be performed and volunteers recognized for their commitment to serving and giving the power of oneself and service to another empowers the giver and the recipient and experience teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all of our nation's social problems and volunteers are vital to the future as a caring and productive nation. And I now therefore be resolved that I Ryan Condon, Mayor of the City of Nevada, Iowa, do hereby proclaim April twentieth through twenty six, eight twenty five, as national volunteer. All right, Emily.
Emily Shaq, me and Street Nevada, um, three years ago, I was part of a group, um, included some people here in the room um, to do a volunteer project and as part of that, we decided that every year in April, we would recognize some volunteers, so. Um, in a town like Nevada, it's the volunteers who are making it a great place to live. From service club projects like Denny's Dock at the pond behind the fieldhouse to human service organizations like Harmony Clothing Closet and Cubby's Cupboard. From event groups like Lincoln Highway Days Committee and the Nevada Rodeo Committee to the economic development groups like Main Street Nevada and the NBC. Even the coaches for our youth sports and the concessions we purchase from at school games are run by volunteers. None of these things would be possible without volunteers and our town would lack a lot of options. This year, we had eight nominations for outstanding volunteers in the community. The list of organizations they volunteer for is extensive. Runners United Nevada, Nevada Food Up First, Rotary Club of Nevada, Nevada School Foundation, Main Street Nevada, Nevada J C's, Nevada Farmers Market, Camelot Theater Foundation, Pizza Pailooza, Boy Scouts, and probably lots of others that were missing. Unfortunately, only a couple were able to be here this evening, but we'd like to recognize all eight of our outstanding volunteers. Micah Hayek, Robin Lee Schmidt, Tiffany Tope, Denny and Nancy Thompson, Muriel Burnett, and Jenny Angus. And all of these volunteers will receive Nevada Helping Hands pin. And if those of you who are here would come up front, we'd like to get a picture with Mayor, please.
Might wanna do it under the sign.
All right, I'm together. All right.
Next item is the fiscal year twenty six human services funding round, Brenda Dwyer.
Mayor and council, it's my pleasure to join you this evening, uh, to talk and, and provide an overview of where we're headed with human.
Is funding this year?
My understanding that Luke and Henry will be joining us actually on the review committee. Um, so thank you for saying yes to the, uh, mayor's, um, appointment on that. Uh, so, uh, it's my understanding that the city has thirty five thousand dollars allocated in the fiscal year twenty six budget uh, to support, um, human service funding uh, within the community of Nevada. I've distributed a press release that I hope to have, uh, Marlis distribute tomorrow on your behalf, as well as the foundation's behalf. Um, just a reminder that this funding can only be used to support basic needs, so the requests would need to be for food, shelter, and clothing for the citizens of Nevada. Um, and again, uh, the goal would be is that the applications should be due, uh, on or before four o'clock on July third. Uh, the goal would be is to have the committee get those right after the Fourth of July holiday. Uh, I'll review them for completeness and all the needed attachments. We'll have, uh, both, uh, Luke and Henry, as well as the representatives from the foundation, review and score those. We'll meet if necessary to discuss where we're at with request. And then we'll bring a formal recommendation, both to the foundation and this group um, on around the twenty first of July. Um, if we have more requests than we have funding, uh, we'll, uh, talk to the foundation and see where we're at with our, uh, Helping Hands funds, and if there is foundation funds available yet to supplement what the city's doing, just a reminder, that is our long-term goal in our efforts to raise money for seasons of giving. It would support uh, us doing additional grant making in these areas, so, uh, thank you for your support of the program. Uh, it's popular, we will make sure that any entity that is applying for funding before we actually give them a check, uh, they'll need to complete their reporting. Uh, that's required for last year's funding, so, uh, we've kind of fallen into a good process there in terms of contract and post-reporting, so, uh, likely what I'll do when we come back the end of July is I'll actually show you the numbers of the number of folks within the community that were helped with fiscal year twenty twenty five funding. Any questions for me?
Brenda, are we gonna have, I know you've had a workshop in the past for applicants, will you continue that?
Uh, we can certainly do that, Sandy, thanks for the reminder, so I may adjust the press release to include a time for, uh, folks to come in and, and, uh, and make that available, so just a reminder, when I have the podium as well, I know that Jordan has extended an invitation, but, uh, we have, uh, an open house for the Homes for Iowa, um, that will be held on May twentieth from one to four, so that's the homes that the Story County Housing Trust Fund has been building, uh, on Tenth Street, and so just a little plugged, if you could attend, uh, we'd love to have you there, so if you have any questions, uh, again, feel free to reach out to me, we wanna have a lot of good applicants come in for this round.
Thanks, Brenda. We're moving on.
Mayor, can I point out, uh, that another one of Emily's names just walked in, I'm sure he tried to sneak in so he wouldn't be seen, but Micah Hayek was one of the names that ever. So. Sorry, not sorry.
We are opening the public forum. I have a number of questions, but it looks like they're all having to do with rezoning. So I don't believe we're addressing that in this forum, correct?
Yeah, it'll be under that next.
There's still public forum for any other topic.
So. Any other comments for this topic? All right, that public forum is closed. Moving on. Uh, next item is ordinance ten sixty four, ordinance amending the zoning map of state Nevada by rezoning property at six thirty, Sixth Street, from R three to R four. All right, I have a number of questions for this. Uh, we'll start with Dan Sprouse.
Good afternoon, Dan Sprouse, five oh seven G Avenue. I stand against you and oppose to your guys' rezoning and your project. You guys have spent tens of thousands of dollars or approved tens of thousands of dollars for this project without talking to anyone around. This whole project is not plausible. You can't tell me that you guys can get the parking that is required off street. Go over to Fourth Street between G and H, you'll see how bad it is. There's only two of you that live close enough to even care. Luke, thank you for listening to your constituents. Henry's close enough to care. Steve's sent out that he thinks that eighty percent of people want this. No, you're not listening to the people of Nevada. It's, no. You guys are completely overreaching with this. We're not against something being done with it, we're against this. You need to rethink it. And I know that's a lot of asking. But none of you seem to be within reach to care. I would ask you to think about it. Thank you.
Sam Walter, I apologize.
Dear council members, my name is Sam Walter, and I live at ten twenty three Ninth Street. I'm speaking tonight in favor of rezoning for the old hospital to be renovated into apartments as proposed by the developer. Over the last several years, different iterations of this council have worked hard to find a solution for this building and based on the housing needs, assessments, and the lack of progress on affordable entry-level housing in this town, I believe this project would be an exciting positive for our community. In our discussions of this issue, I've become convinced that this is the only economically viable use for this building that could be carried out before it decays to the point of being unusable. We're already paying state taxes to fund the grants that could facilitate this project, and if it moves forward, these tax dollars can go to use here in our town. These apartments may not be for everyone, but adding more market rate housing benefits the entire town by easing housing costs across the board. When we have an opportunity like this, we should be pro-business, pro-housing, and work together as a community to make it succeed. I understand their concerns about noise, litter, parking, and crime. And the best remedy for those fears is exactly what this project offers, a full, active, and maintained property. A vacant hospital brings greater risks, and there are examples elsewhere, like in Marshalltown, where their unused hospital was burglarized and set on fire. We don't want that here. Parking plan for this development is reasonable compared to other places where I've lived in my experience. With clear enforcement of parking and city ordinances, I believe the concerns about disorderliness can be absolutely managed. Many other communities successfully navigate these issues at larger scales and at greater densities. Want to recognize concerns from small landlords and business owners who fear that larger developers like Capstone receive preferential treatment. And I agree that the city should be equally supportive of small businesses and landlords, and it should be easier for everyone to contribute to meeting our town's housing needs. This project should not be the end of that conversation, it should be the beginning. And this situation highlights the need for strong ordinances to prevent large property owners from. And this situation highlights the need for strong ordinances to prevent large property owners from abandoning buildings without consequences. We should not be in this situation where we have an albatross hanging around our necks, worried about what's going to happen if this doesn't go to use. It should be a requirement that if you have a business operating, you cannot just abandon it without effects in place to ensure that it's used effectively according to the needs of the town. In short, I believe that this project will add needed housing, it will strengthen the main street businesses, and it'll turn a problem into a real asset for Nevada, and I urge you to support the rezoning. Thank you for your time and your service to our town.
Thank you.
Shane Heinz, thirteen twenty five Sixth Street. I reached out to all the council members to talk to them. Dane, you refused to talk to me. Sandy, I appreciate you meeting with me. Jason, we had a conversation. I think we agreed on some stuff and disagreed on some stuff, but we had productive conversation. Steve, you ignored me, or I'm not, I'm sorry, you sent me a canned response and didn't want to talk to me. Henry, you ignored me. And Luke, we did talk some, and I thought we've had an amicable conversation about it. The rezoning of this doesn't have to be done. If you rezone this and allow this company to move forward, you're giving up leverage. You have no leverage. As it stands, they don't have the parking, they don't meet the parking requirements. I've, I've looked at the map, I've counted, and I've counted, and I've counted, and there's only seventy eight parking spots. And so that's a far cry short of the hundred and fifty that are required by your code. Your code says two point five, which is a hundred and fifty. And there are seventy eight. They've lost sidewalks that they don't have on their plan, they don't even have a site plan. I just, when I built the Ames, I wasn't able to move a shovel of dirt before, before all my site plans were done, all the questions were answered. Like Jason, you said you had quite a few questions that were left unanswered yet.
A few.
What, I don't understand jumping the gun on this. If it's gonna happen anyway, can we at least get it? I mean, I feel like a good portion of you are going to ignore the seventy five to eighty percent of the community that doesn't want this. But the rezoning is not a requirement. There are things that can happen on that property, the zoning is not a requirement. And now that we've got the catering property coming up north with, is it a hundred and sixty-ish apartments, two, three bedroom?
Roughly.
Ish? At a much affordable, much more affordable rate is the proposal, correct?
Yes.
And now, so now we're, we're looking at having competition for that apartment. And there's a lot of people that still don't understand, this is not affordable housing. The apartment thing planned is not affordable housing, they, people need to understand that. I talk to people every day that think it's affordable housing, it is not. It is not a retirement or a, or a whatever the word was, but a retirement home. It's not a retirement home either. And another fear I have is, okay, let's say capitalism plays out, we rent a whole bunch of apartments north of town for, what? Eighty percent of what they're gonna rent for here and get two to three bedrooms versus a three hundred foot studio here. If they don't rent at retail, they will subsidize. And you all remember what happened when they subsidized apartments when they overbuilt Ames. You all remember that, you see it on the news all the time. We don't need that in our town. Can I reserve the right to come back because I, I ran out of time to write all this stuff down? I may, I may have a follow up here.
Yeah, I think we can.
Because I, I'm not, I'm not clear through, if I, if I come back, it'll be just a word or two.
Okay, we'll reserve another minute.
Yeah. Sorry, right, see, like I can talk to you, and then I like that.
All right. Thanks, Shane, Steve Emerson.
Steve Emerson, two twenty one Second Avenue, Cedar Rapids. I sent out my notes earlier because I wasn't sure what the weather was gonna do, I'll be brief on this. Wanted to point out the realities of this, I'm comparing our project to when this was a hospital, not what it is currently. When it was a hospital, there were three hundred full time and part time staff at the hospital, seventy seven residents living there. Visitors, deliveries, they parked about two hundred cars around there, and we talked with the hospital and the staff. And the parking consumed all their lots, and it also consumed street parking too, multiple blocks out into the neighborhood. We're proposing sixty to eighty residents, much lighter footprint than what was there before. And we're guessing there's gonna be about eighty cars. Yes, the parking calls out for two, two point five per unit. We predict that in a few years, the city's gonna say, okay, you're not using those lots, let's infill with housing and relax us a little bit. The angle parking can indeed be used by anybody, but so can the on-street parking in front of all the neighbors, that's fine too. I would encourage you to put a four hour limit on those spots that will prevent Shane's concern of abandoned vehicles taking up those spots. They gotta be moved at least once during the day, that's not unreasonable. Um, one criticism I really want to refute is the communication with the community. We started talking in twenty four to businesses, to community members, to the hospital and the hospital staff, really trying to talk to the people that were our target for these units, people that needed housing. We also, the comment came up last time, if you're gonna build a fence, you talk to your neighbors. Why didn't this happen? That did, Mike talked to several neighbors, he has notes, who wants a fence, who doesn't want a fence. Many neighbors did have a conversation with them. Some of their comments have honed this project for us. Some people offered to sell their additional land that might help if we wanted parking or something like that. But our discussions began in twenty four on this in public council meetings and community meetings that were advertised and we invited to public. So it hasn't been done in a vacuum. Final element that I mentioned a little bit, but I really, it's dear to me, is the adaptive reuse of existing and historic buildings is, is important to me. I don't do a lot of new construction, new construction's easy, our firm does it. But I personally really like the historic buildings, adaptive reuse, taking the old bones. This building's been here for a hundred years, it was built right, they're not built like this anymore. If we can upgrade the mechanical electrical systems, keep the structure, we're extending the life of this. It's personally rewarding to the designers and the developers. It's economically impactful to the community because you're getting more for your buck and also environmentally responsive. It's the right thing for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Rick Martinez.
Rick Martinez, two five five West D Avenue. Just had a couple of questions. If I am understanding correctly, to pass the ordinance, you need to have a super majority, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, do you need it on all three votes or just on one of them?
All, all three of them.
All three, so tonight and two weeks just now.
Correct.
Okay. I know there's been a lot of opinions about having it and changing it and all this sort of thing, but I have not heard anything from the Public Safety Department. I would like to hear what the chief, both fire chief and police chief have to say in their opinion concerning a building that's gonna be empty. Has there been any vandalism or issues with the building as long as it has been empty? Because it's been empty for a while. So I don't know if they could speak tonight or how you want to do that, but I haven't heard anything, and I would like to hear something from them. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Jim?
Jim Meyer, six twenty two Fifth Street, still in Nevada, Iowa. Because Story County and the city of Nevada didn't want to take responsibility for what they created, you're gonna destroy our neighborhood so a multimillion dollar corporation can make more money. The only thing our neighborhood did to deserve this was to buy a home in the city of Nevada that cares more about money than it does the property and the citizens that already live here. This is not the way to get people to come to Nevada to buy homes. This is a clear message to stay away from Nevada, because you can do this to their home at any time you deserve. I've heard people promote this project that don't even live in the city of Nevada. And you don't listen to the citizens that live next door to it. How we doing? Oh, I'm good. Take a break. If you vote yes to this, you will be building this on the bones of our neighborhood. We've been here a long time. This is not a boogie story about homeless people. Our neighborhood will not survive this. For all the people I have talked to that tell me, don't care, don't affect me, wait until they point a bullseye at their neighborhood and decide to put something there that will destroy them. You're sending a message, this can be done if you vote yes. And I don't believe five minutes is enough, but they've been planning the attack on our neighborhood for a year and a half. I better not say that one, my wife will kick me. Thank you.
Thank you. Dorian.
Dorian Meyer, six twenty two Fifth Street, Nevada. I hope this makes sense because I wrote it at four thirty in the morning because I was so upset. I come before you for the fifth time to urge you to vote no on rezoning. I've tried to reason with you to see my point of view, which apparently fell on deaf ears. Please understand this is very personal and very emotional. I have been accused of being ill informed and emotional. I am emotional but hardly ill informed. I feel increasingly frustrated, bitter, and betrayed. City Council, you are my people, you represent Nevada. It is your job to care about Nevada and its residents, and yet you don't seem to care because we don't matter. This is my home, my safe place. It's where for forty five and a half years, as a public servant working with the Story County Courts, I plan to spend my retirement. What's the saying, something like God laughs while men make plans? Well, I bet you laughed while I made plans to retire in peace in my home and secure in the investment of my home that would benefit my children when I'm gone. I wish I could call each one of you to feel, to have you explain why sixty units is appropriate and worth destroying my neighborhood. I do not oppose converting this building into an apartment. That's fine, Nevada needs housing. You would wel, we would welcome new families in our neighborhood, but this is about twenty units too many. The sardine cam plan is not what's best for new residents. I thought surely when you got real, the number would go down. But money is the driving number of units, and money talks louder than I do. At the open house, we were told by the developers, their vision is to have studio and one bedroom units for retirees who want to downsize. They see this elder residence is walking across an exit to the street or the grounds in the snow, scrape off their vehicles, schlepping groceries in. I would not pay the rent they expect to be crammed into a tiny apartment with very limited amenities like a community room, a patio, a balcony. At this point in my life, I do fit the little old lady demographic, and I totally disagree. I want to enjoy my la, life and not battle the elements. I want to feel like my home is my own with room to do what I enjoy, reading, crafting, sewing, having family events and overnight guests. I don't want to feel forced into four walls, their box. It is insulting to represent this as quality, affordable housing. No one is going to flock to move here, and you will have wasted good grant money to patch together a mess right on the Sixth Street corridor. I hope voters remember who wanted this Frankenstein. This is not the best you can do, or if it is, your bar is pretty low. I had hoped Capstone would turn Sal's ear into a silk purse, that this ugly building would be designed that, excuse me, that this ugly building, which appears to be designed on a Scrabble board, could by some magic become a lovely, family-friendly apartment complex. Yes, from the east and the south, it's quite presentable, but out my fu, front window, it is ugly. You might want to save this ugly building and in the process disrupt my life, my neighborhood, because after all, I don't matter. You really want to put your name on this? Actually, it's possible to keep the eastern side of the building and eliminate the medical clinic and the older central section. This could contain forty very attractive units. You could keep parking within the square bro, block and sell off the other lots. But this is not what Capstone Nevada Flats wants to do, it's sixty units or nothing. What Capstone wants, Capstone gets because they have the bucks. There's no stopping it, no options, no community input, no creative thinking. As long as someone gets the grant money and proposes any kind of rehab of this abandoned building, you seem to be good with it. Who cares about the residents or the future residents of this Scrabble board building? You don't, they don't matter as long as any DC gets a feather in their cap and you can pat yourself on your back and go on. I wonder if you had some study showing we needed industry and a rendering plant got a grant and thought the old hospital was perfect for it. You would rezone and plot a rendering plant in the middle of our neighborhood. Why? Because we don't matter. Once again, you marry grant money with some empty building and the Nevada Flats is painted as some zombie endangering Nevada, and presto, chango, we have another problem solved by the ingenuity of any DC. May I go on?
She can use the rest of my time, I didn't use all mine.
We're gonna keep to the five minutes, I'm sorry.
Okey dokey, thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
PowerPoint that's submitted earlier.
You don't have it, you will get it. Hold up.
All right. So Michael Fulker, seven oh eight Fifth Street. So firstly, a while back, my neighbor put in a chicken coop. What did he do before that? He talked to me about it, imagine that. We talked about the size of it, the impact it might have, and my feelings about it. And he did this before he set his plans in motion. This never happened with this mess. It's embarrassing how fences and chicken coops have better thought, communication, and planning going into them at the outset than this thing. Secondly, next slide, thank you. There was a business that left town a while back and left their building vacant for over a year before I swooped in and bought it. I'm talking about the Ryan Funeral Home. Last week, I talked with the funeral director who sold it to me, and he confirmed that right after they sold off the business, they vacated the place. And not only did they not have any methadex break in, but more importantly, no one was concerned about an imminent blight. What are we gonna do to fill this empty building to prevent a terrible blight? Now granted, the building's not as big as the medical center, but at six thousand square feet, including the three hearsa joint garage, it's not small. I might be wrong, but nowhere in archive meeting minutes, news archives, social media archives, anything I could search could I find anyone batting an eye about it, mortician monopoly notwithstanding. And a town like ours, a building in the middle of town that's empty for a while seems like it shouldn't be that big of a concern. And I just criticized the sheer inconsistency of this. Thirdly, next slide. This is a map of a two hundred foot radius around medical center and parking lots, and highlighted are all the properties for which protest letters were submitted last time. This is what fifty five percent protest rate in those bounds looks like. But who really cares about all those darn nimmies in the neighborhood, right? Well, what if we expanded the map of it somehow? Next slide, thank you. I'm not big in Facebook, but I recently became aware of a poll someone posted in a private group, a group that seems to have a large fraction of the town as members. It asked if you support the six unit plan or not. Now, Facebook being the great data vampire that it is, not only keeps track of who voted what, but nicely shows it, shows the names. So I took the liberty of painstakingly cross referencing all the names against who voted against public property records. And I threw out all the cases where people lived in Ames or Colo, threw out all the cases where parents let their kids have a Facebook account, and threw out all the cases where I couldn't find any info on the person. And after all that data trimming, I was And after all that data trimming, I was still left with about half of the names on each side, forty-seven and fifty-four percent respectively. And this is what that looks like. Next slide. The closer dark red dots in the middle are the protest letters, some of whom also voted on Facebook poll. The green dots are those supporting sixty units, and the rest of that ocean of bright red are the ones against. There's also a small number of farm properties outside the scope of this map. Also, those are mostly red dots. Now admittedly, this is not the most scientific study. I could very well decide to spend a couple of weeks of vacation days going door-to-door with petition in hand to get things properly handwritten as an improvement. But I want to say that this data, it's sample set, is decently trustworthy. Arguably more trustworthy than Microsoft Office Form Survey that has zero authentication whatsoever. Facebook, that makes it pretty hard to make fake accounts these days. Maybe you jump through all these hoops to prove that you're not a Russian botnet or something. Also, in going over all the names, I didn't find any duplicates, which is a good check for integrity. So this map illustrates how this is not just a my neighborhood opinion. It's not even just a my ward opinion. It is a multi-ward opinion. Another tidbit I noticed while going over all the names is that six of the ones against also own businesses downtown. These business owners are supposedly the ones who stand to benefit the most from the sardine can plan, but even they seem to see it as ridiculous. So finally, I just want to say that misguided state or federal incentives should not be used to chase a terrible idea off a cliff like a wayward coyote. Growth can be perfectly fine, but high-density growth is malignant growth.
So.
That was fantastic. Thank you, Mike. E.
Steve Modernock, seven one seven Fifth Street. And thank you for the opportunity to talk to you. I'm not going to go through all my pages tonight. In fact, I don't think I'll even look at them. Thing I, I agree with what Michael said and with the previous speaker who spoke about in terms of this development. The traffic concerns, the noise concerns, the parking concerns. I just, I've been looking for a reason why there should be that many one-bedroom apartments in this project. And I looked through several places for answers. And of course, the only thing you can find is the Story County Housing Study of 2020. And so we'll use that. I know Brenda says we're going to do another one in 2025, but we don't have one right now, so we'll go by this study. On page twenty-seven, it says that, we talked about vacancy rates. A good, healthy vacancy rate is between five and six percent. In the report, it says that Nevada had in 2018 up through 2020, I think it was, it was at five point five percent. And they had projected it out to 2040, where it got to be six percent. So that doesn't really show that what we're doing in Nevada is very wrong about amount of housing. So why do we need forty additional, or sixty or eighty, or whatever the number is, additional apartments? The other thing I wanted to talk about was the the number of housing units. Okay, in the study, the 2020 study, they said by 2040, there's supposed to be another five hundred and fourteen housing units is what's going to be the need in that, by that year. Well, when they talk about a housing unit, they're talking about two point four people living together. So sixty, all these forty-five. Let's see, what's number forty? Anyway. Forty-plus single units don't really count toward relieving our housing study at all. In fact, the two, two, the eight two-bedroom apartments do count toward it. But that's only eight units out of five hundred and fourteen. Now, not all people like apartments. And if you add that into it, the study also shows that what people want are single-family houses, two, two, three-bedroom houses. Low price, of course. And that they, they think that form of housing unit has a ninety-one, ninety-one percent chance of being successful. When it comes to apartments, the percentage drops to sixty-six percent. So people don't want apartments. They want housing. So all that, all, all these extra apartments are going to do is just make vacancy rate go. See, it'd be more available, so it'd be more units available than what are people. So the price is going to go down. Let's see, we've got a minute left. You know, this thing's been called, called an albatross for a long time. I think somebody on the council said even back when it was put in, it was called an albatross. And I decided to look up what albatross means. I kind of did, but I decided to look and see. Albatross. As a in, as a metaphor, albatross typically represents a heavy burden, a problem, or a past mistake that continues to have the same old that haunt the same old one and prevents them from being removed. It continues to prevent them from being solved in the future. So it's an albatross now. You build an apartment building that doesn't have the right ratio of apartments that people need. Could go out of business, and the albatross will be right back in your hands again someday, maybe that says we need to do something different. There should have been more done way back when, even on the twenty-four, that Vision 2040. They were talking about the hospital.
Dean Rogers.
Dean Rogers, six one six Fifth Street. Have been here. Lived in Nevada since nineteen seventy-nine, worked for the Co-op. We moved into our present house in nineteen ninety-three, which is right directly across from the hospital on the west side. I'm, I'm, I'm like with the rest of the people, we, we, we cherish our neighborhood and, and and none of us are against it possibly being an apartment complex, or we'd even talked at one time that if, if everything was gone, you could put four to six nice homes in that same area versus apartments. And so it's, you know, I'm the reasons we've all talked about is the parking. We've talked about the, the, the noise factor. We've talked about a lot of things and, and I don't know. I'm trying to figure out why this has to be studied in so quick. I mean, there's no, no other options have come along as far as, as what could be done versus this. So I know in some of the meetings, we've had a lot of people here and quite a few of them never spoke. And I would be curious to know how many people, even this evening, are sitting here that are opposed to it, that have not said anything to that effect. And just to give an idea of the ones that are here, what are you thinking? You don't have to speak. Is it yes or is it no? I would say if it's possible, could we have the people that are, are against it stand up?
Yeah, we're not doing that. This is just public comment time.
Share your comments. That's not appropriate.
Okay. Well, that would be the only way that the people here would know who's, you know, what, what their thoughts are, but so that's where I stand. It's the same as before. Thank you.
Yes, I'm Danny Howell. I live in Ames. I'm a Nevada graduate. Raise over here. I know several of you. Some of you know me quite well, with my family. Now, I'm president of Howell Investment Finance. I go all over the state of Iowa, and I finance senior housing and multifamily complexes. Now, I financed properties for both Capstone, for Steve Emerson in the past. And when Capstone approached me about this project, and Mike asked me to explore the financing, I was excited about the opportunity. I was excited about it because we have the opportunity to take an old building that the hospital is now vacated and turn it into something useful. And when Mike brought Steve into the project, Steve personally brought his architect team over here, and they went through the building, took a party close to a week, but they measured every wall. Then they went back to their Cedar Rapids office, and his architecture firm went and platted the building to see if and what we could come up with. And that's basically where the sixty units came from. We were able to put those in. And Steve is not one that, I mean, he's done probably twenty-five of these projects across Cedar Rapids. From former school buildings to office buildings in downtown Cedar Rapids, he's taken properties that were flooded out, totally flooded out, and revamped them. Now, I understand the neighbors' concerns about parking, the number of units, other related issues. However, I've had the opportunity to see what these projects look like firsthand. They're well-built. They're exceptionally maintained. And I bring, believe they will bring the same type of project and quality to this town. Now, something I want to address. The developers are receiving two point five million dollars. Not three point five million dollars, two point five million dollars. And earlier, I handed out a copy to all the council, and I appreciate the council's time. Look at this. Here's a cover of it. In here is each of the awards. Now, what some people will go and get confused is on a workforce housing tax credit is broken down into two parts. One part is for the actual workforce housing award. On this project, for that, they're getting seven hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. The second part is they get the sales tax reimbursement from the construction costs. That adds up to two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Bingo. One million dollars right there. Okay? Second, the city of Nevada is giving sixty thousand dollars. There's no one million dollars hidden in here anywhere. It's sixty thousand dollars. That's all that the city is putting into this. The third award that you have in your paper is for the brownfields. That's for the environmental issues. That is one point five million. So total, they're receiving two million, five hundred, sixty thousand dollars, period. Also, there is no additional one million dollars when the project is completed. They get a total of two point five million dollars, period, right there. Now, I understand some residents have told me, oh, well, we didn't get this money. Well, and to those, I apologize. I wish you would have. You know, but the thing that we got to realize is things do change. A lot of times, state programs change depending on what the budget looks like for the state. And they do this, I mean, all the time. They, the city or the Iowa Economic Development Authority announced recently thirty-seven million dollars in workforce housing tax credits were awarded in Iowa. Those will support sixty-two different housing projects and more than two thousand residential units. Now, you know, it's easy to tear down the building, things like that. But why would you do that when the building has got good bones? The building is structurally sound. Yes, the, the hospital part and the clinic look like crap. I'm sorry, but they do. But I've been in buildings that Steve has bought, and he took me through them, and they look beautiful now. One other thing, as far as somebody asked about, you know, problems on mischief part, just briefly, the Capstone told me that there's been a little bit of a problem at the building. The developer found it, or not the developer, but the contractor found it. He corrected it. Now it's the third time the same issue has happened. So I hope there's better for Nevada, and I hope that the council will look for different resources. Thank you.
Shane, I'm going to let you go ahead and finish out your minute that you have left.
I just wanted to add this on here. My, my wife and I have been collecting apartments for twenty years-ish. I can think, I mean, I bet you if I, with five fingers, I don't, I haven't had that many requests for one-bedroom apartments. I look at the project as completed. It doesn't do anything for Nevada at all. The people that stay there, they don't live there. They sleep there. And going ahead with the zoning thing, Dana, I'm going to pick on you for just one second. I think you have a kid, right? Two. If you tell your kids that you're going to take them to Chuck E. Cheese, and then when they get home, they're going to clean their room, you take them to Chuck E. Cheese, you go home and they don't clean their room, what leverage have you got? And do they clean that room when you get home? I'm sure your kids are exquisite. But I'm saying you've lost, you've lost that leverage once you've given the prize.
Thanks, Shane. I have one last comment submit by Andy Kelly, who remains committed against this. Chris, would you come up and speak about?
You have somebody?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah, please.
Tom Richards, seven twenty, Third Street. I, the, the project, it doesn't fit. So, you know, you know, you have to rezone. You know, you have to suspend parking regulations. So there's a couple of red lights on the dashboard, and then you got sixty percent of the adjacent property owners signing a petition against it. Well, that's another red light. I mean, I guess if I was in your position, I'd be tapping the brakes. But I, I get the sense that what's driving it, two things, inertia. You made some promises that I don't, in retrospect, I don't think you should have made. And the other thing is the specter of this meth freak apocalypse. And I just, I wanted to address that. We have, we have substantial counterexamples to that scenario. And I, I don't, I don't fault Ray for bringing this up. I think it, it needs to be considered. But we had a, we had a vacant dormitory on the academy grounds, and it got rehabbed into apartments by the locals. We had a vacant church on the academy grounds. It was vacant for, I don't know, ten years or more. No apocalypse. And it got dis, it got dismantled. They did a beautiful job, textbook job, local guys. I used to hitchhike a lot, yeah. And I know a little bit about finding places to crash. That motel south of the highway would have been a prime crash place. It got rehabbed. What I'm trying to say is this, this apocalyptic scenario is not what's going on in our town. Our local, our local guys can, can do things. And I'll, I'll, I'll do one more. Smitty's left a vacant building. And who should step in but Shane Heinz? And rehab that thing, and it's a going concern. So I'm just saying, don't get stampeded by this I, broken window apocalypse. I, I think you, I think you, this, this project needs some more thinking. So that's what.
Any concerns regarding the building?
Well, for public safety, we, we don't like abandoned buildings. I know this is zoning as far as whether it goes from R three to R four. Whatever we could do to keep it from being abandoned would be ideal. Ray has already referenced the fire concerns. There's not a ton Um, there's not a ton of studies in the state of Iowa that will support one way or another, you know, communities don't generally abandon buildings just to figure out how the, the study goes. Um, nationally, there's studies out there, much larger cities, but they suggest a higher crime rate with abandoned buildings. Um, I believe forty-one percent of abandoned buildings in one study were accessible without locks, uh, broken windows, broken doors, such. So that's something we wanna try to avoid. Um, in, in this community of Nevada, I'm thinking of the old Academy Circle School, the one that was back kinda by the gym. Um, all the windows and doors were broken out of that. We routinely had squatters, uh, signs of vandalism, criminal mischief, trespass, um, drug activity. It was hidden, um, but it was a routine call for us when that building existed. So, um, if we could eliminate that from taking place in the middle of Sixth Street, that would be ideal. Um, the old Wilson Barn that was right behind, like, Indian Ridge, when we went in to burn that, um, there's obvious signs of vandalism, drug activity. So those are areas that we see that we try to encourage and produce results that don't allow them to be abandoned. So whatever steps need to be taken so that building is not abandoned would be ideal for public safety, both for fire and also the crime rate in that community.
Shane, we're not, this is just a public. Yeah. Thanks, Tris. Uh, Ray? Any comments regarding this?
I think you covered it good. I don't know that I ever.
Could I come up? Thank you.
Yeah, Ray Reynolds, Fire Chief. I don't know how I got a, uh, acquainted with the word apocalypse, but, uh, I, I can tell you that I have studied vacant buildings and the threat to the fire service, and I've referenced that a couple of times. Uh, the directors actually pointed out a lot of the issues with vacant buildings. Uh, we do have a substance abuse issue that takes place, but, uh, I, I would not call it apocalyptic, but there are some public safety concerns that would be attractive for a building that large in the middle of town. But you can retract the apocalyptic. I, I think we're not big enough for that. Thank you.
Are there any other comments before the public hearing is closed? Council, any suspicion?
Did we have a motion second yet? I'll move to approve the second reading of one that's ten sixty-four. Second.
Motion is second. Council, please vote. Okay, uh, motion passes. Moving on to the next item, which is Resolution number eighty-six, a resolution approving the contract between Iowa Economic Development Authority and the State of Nevada for the Award of Community Development Block Grant Program twenty-five, ETR zero zero.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Can we quickly, that's not the results of the poll, it was five to one in favor of that.
Five to one, she got an error that came up to display, but we were both watching it, and it, it showed five to one.
Uh, council, please vote, item twelve. All right, motion passes. Hey, moving on to reports, uh, start with you, Jordan.
Uh, we had a leadership steering committee meeting today about next year's class. Also, a discussion pertaining to lift station, Boomerang would like substantial completion, but we told them that we weren't going to issue that or put it on the council agenda. They still have quite a bit to do before we can even think about something like that. Uh, had an alliance board meeting. We also discussed the industrial sampling reports that we received. We've had to do several of those in the last several months for different industries in the community, and it was nice to get those back, and so we're scheduling a meeting with businesses so we can discuss those with them. Um, this is something that the DNR requires for, uh, TAs. Uh, an NEDC meeting, we also went through another kickoff meeting for the SRF. Uh, spoke with FEMA about closing out some of our several projects that we've had over the past five years. Essentially, it takes a long time to get those closed out, but, uh, we should be able to get those finished up. Uh, MSN meeting, so Main Street Trail Discussion, you'll be seeing more on that because it'll be on the agenda on June ninth. Then more wastewater meetings, and then Blue Sky Wind, that is the current owner of the windmill that is currently and has been sitting on the old wastewater treatment facility. Uh, he has a signed contract with Sandia Labs, and they plan on starting to move that off that area on May fifteenth of the date that they told him, so.
Good.
Believe I would see that.
Yep, same here.
I'll see. Start back there. Ray, we're gonna pick on you again to begin with, I guess.
I'm good.
All right.
I'm good, Mayor.
I'm good unless you guys have questions. I'm good unless you have questions.
Nothing from the library, you guys?
I'll join the call. Um, just reminder, the second meeting in May will be on a Tuesday instead of Monday, because it's a holiday, so I just wanted to put that out there. Um, we're also starting our financial software conversion the end of May. Very excited, I'm very nervous.
Thank you.
Actually, I have a library question. How's the, uh, director situation going?
Um, she, do I need to go to the mic?
I, I think you just answered the question.
Um, she has started with us maybe three weeks ago, just coming one day a week. Um, she was there today, actually, and then she starts full-time June first. So she has a house in town, she's settling in, and she'll be joining us officially June first.
Awesome, great, thank you. Anything from council?
I wanted to thank all the department heads in Jordan as well. I, a couple of weeks ago, I sat down with all of them for a little while to just get caught up on what's going on in town and what the upcoming projects are, so thank you for your time, and thank you for all that you do. It was greatly appreciated by me, so thank you.
Coffee.
Yes, that was the next one. Yes, uh, I wanted to, I sent an email out to everybody about floating the idea of bringing back coffee with the council and/or something similar. And I think, uh, we wanted to talk about it here to see what people thought, so. Before the meeting ended tonight, see what the consensus was, what the interest was on trying to bring that back. Ren's Cafe has said they will allow us to do it there if they, if we're wanting to do it.
I'm always up there.
I think it's great. I think it worked best though when we had a topic with an expert, you know, if it's some issue that we're working on where, you know, the most knowledgeable person is there, and we really did that when we went to Zoom. But it seemed to be a more interesting discussion, and I think we drew some different people in with specific topics, so that would be one suggestion, and maybe not all the time, I mean, certainly, some people just wanna listen, but it's good to have some, I think it's good to do some education with it.
Absolutely. Like, once a month for maybe two of us, so that's an average of once every three months for us. Roughly, is that something people think that they can?
That sounds good.
Well, towards the end, we had started kinda bringing in school board members and maybe some other
County supervisors.
Supervisors, so, I think about too.
Absolutely. But maybe June, ramp it up? That's something.
Sure.
I'll talk to Ren, and I'll send something out that we can kind of maybe commit to certain dates or something like that. Thank you.
Um, I just have one thing quick before we wrap up. I've been learning a lot. Uh, one of the things that, uh, we do have is a lot of openings on boards and commissions, and I know there's a lot of people here, and there have been for this, the topic that we cover tonight. I'd love to see this kind of commitment and, and work on some of these boards and commissions that have openings. We're interested in getting in and doing some of the work that, that would have been in on this, actually. I encourage you to please apply, uh, at the state of Nevada websites. We have a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Wait.